Good evening. I leaned into it. I'd like to welcome you all to the May 21st, 2012 Waschuggah City Council meeting and ask you to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rose, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Russell?
Here.
Councilmember Klinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Greenley?
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay?
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Here.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes.
Dave?
Are you taking amendments to the consent agenda at this point?
No, to the regular agenda itself.
Okay. Nope.
Okay, hearing none, do we have any correspondence?
No.
And we are at that first opportunity for anybody from the public that wishes to address council to do so. Come on up, John. Don't be shy. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman, my name is John Wagner, 36710, Southeast 20th Street, Waschuggah. Tonight, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. I might make some comments later, but at the last meeting, I asked some questions revolving the special meeting that we had on Thursday night, and two of the participants of the group that called the special meeting weren't there, and so I really didn't get kind of the answers I was hoping to get from the two that were here, so I'd like to ask them again, and hopefully in the council comments, maybe I can get some answers to the questions. Luckily, I jotted these down. Start with, there was just no mention of this meeting at the May 7th meeting on Monday, which is a regular city council meeting, where the public gets to come here and hear your comments and observe what's going on and get explanations of what's happening. And so the fact that the announcement came out the following Wednesday, I guess the first question I always have is, why wasn't this talked about in public, so that we could hear your comments or make comments ourselves about the need for the meeting? What was, you know, the background for it? Next question is, I was wondering, why were only four members of the city council involved in the calling for the special meeting, instead of the entire city council? It would seem the regular procedure would be, again, you would discuss it in public, usually you vote on things, we get to see the vote, it's recorded, it's a public meeting. Now, I did check with the city administrator, and I appreciate his input that the meeting was technically illegal, but I think the Open Meetings Act in the state of Washington does allow you to have a special meeting, but it would be, you know, special. And so, you know, if there's a tornado, or a flood, or something really big happens, you have that right to call that meeting. And so I'm kind of wondering, you know, what, why couldn't this, again, why couldn't this have been done in, in public? And then I have questions, too, about why was this announced by a city council member and not the usual procedure? As I understand it, that not all the people that have asked, I think the mayor brought that up, that are on the list of press to be notified, they were not notified, and the agenda was different than usually. That original agenda called for an invocation at a public meeting, and we have never had that, that I know of, since I've been coming here for some time. So that was different. So, let's see, I think I'll just make some comments a little bit about the meeting itself, but those are the questions I would have, because the reason we have an Open Meetings Act, an Open Records Act, so that the public can come here and observe our government. And it's a nonpartisan government here, we're here, you're here, to do the business of the city, and personally, I think you do a very good job, up until this, because when you do things where we can't see it, and where not everybody's involved, you know, it just kind of leads to suspicion of why? Why wasn't it public? And, you know, if this happens now, are we gonna, is this gonna be the procedure, or are we gonna be doing this again? And I don't even know if this was a meeting of four people, or were there emails, or was there telephone calls, or how in fact this was even called for, and if it was a meeting, were there minutes of the meeting, so that the public could observe it? They just talked about it today at the workshop at Canvas about videotaping their meetings becoming electronic age, which we do here. And so, when it's not videotaped, when there's no minutes, when we don't even know how the meeting was called for, to me, that just goes against the intent of the people who, I believe, did the right thing when they passed the Open Meetings Act in the state of Washington, so any level of government, the public, if we want to, gets to come here and observe what you do. So, those are the questions I have, and during the council comment period, I would hope that I could get some clarity on that issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Any other members of the public wish to address council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the consent agenda. Councilman Shoemaker, was there an item you wanted to have pulled off?
Yes, I'd like to pull item E, please.
Okay.
The sidewalks for discussion.
Any other items? I would entertain any motion on the rest of the consent agenda, then.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we approve the consent agenda, item A, council minutes from May 7th, workshop minutes from May 14th, regular AP claims checks 58710 to 58942, and Agenda Bill 4112.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Got a motion.
I thought it was unanimous consent. Pardon me.
Got a motion, and it's second to adopt all items other than item number E. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Takes us straight to Agenda Bill 42-12, a professional services agreement from Wallace Engineering for engineering services for pedestrian improvements for 32nd and Addy Streets. Mr. Dunn?
Yes, this is a grant agreement, or a PSA, actually, agreement with Wallace Engineering, and it has to do with a CDBG grant, a Community Development Block grant, that we received for improvements to pedestrian facilities on 32nd Street and Addy Street, and the recommended action is to authorize the mayor to sign the professional service agreement submitted by Wallace Engineering.
Council discussion? Dave?
I had, I had asked for some detail on this last week, and I discovered that the city's $90,000 that they're going to put towards this project comes from reserves. It was actually moved into an account to fund such projects without raising the reserve issue some time ago. And I, as much as I'd like to see those sidewalks on Addy Street, I'll be voting against this project, because the city's contribution to the project is coming from reserves, not directly, but it is coming from the reserves. And in this economic development, I don't think that, that kind of expenditure from reserves is prudent. And I recognize that's a minority opinion. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Dave. Any other council comments?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the PSA with Wallace.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement submitted by Wallace Engineering. Other council discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Agenda Bill 43-12, a resolution regarding the Bonneville Power Administration I-5 Corridor Reinforcement Project.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mitch, good evening.
Counsel, most of you, I'm assuming all of you are very well aware of the project, the Bonneville Power, the I-5 Corridor Reinforcement Project. We discussed this at our work session in April, and additionally, last week, there was, we learned of Canvas' efforts in petitioning Bonneville by resolution in order to relocate the Bonneville Power lines, as well as alternatives to the overheads, and in fact, undergrounding those. We were, the resolution that's before you is supportive of Canvas and their efforts, but it also recognizes our efforts in requesting relocation of those power lines, as well as alternatives to the overheads, in fact, undergrounding those. The resolution before you, or the recommended action before you is to read the resolution by title only, and to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. I will, if I may, note that I attended Canvas' work session this evening, and heard from Bonneville Power regarding Canvas' resolution, and their initial response to that, basically, it's probably, although it's, they didn't say, they will probably relocate the one through their northern urban growth boundary, doesn't change anything for us. They have a lot of other reasons why they won't look at undergrounding, but they did note that all of those alternatives will be looked at under the EIS, that will be prepared, so. And as far as going further east to Bonneville, they pretty much just say that adds 40 to 50 miles of line, and they wouldn't be looking at doing that, but, so.
Thank you, Mitch. I know, Councilman Shoemaker, I know Liz was here earlier this evening from BPA. Did she get a chance to answer your question that you had?
Yes, and may I, may I share what she?
Absolutely.
What she gave me? My original question was, what is the cost, the increased cost to a customer per kilowatt hour to underground these utilities? She wasn't able to answer the questions for a variety of reasons, and what she said made sense to me. I won't bore you with a whole five-minute spiel, but something that came out of that discussion was very interesting, and that was, if they underground the utilities, it'll only be that portion that runs through the urban area. It won't be the, the portion that runs through the forested area, the countryside. So that would reduce the expenditure considerably from what I was originally thinking about. Originally, I was having trouble supporting this resolution, but I can, I can support it now based on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the resolution by title only.
Hearing no objections, order.
A resolution expressing concern over the sighting of a 500 KV power lines above ground within the city of Waschuggah, and further requesting the appropriate authority consider alternatives to the placement of said power lines for the city of Waschuggah as part of an alternative analysis included in the environmental impact statement for the Bonneville Power Administration I-5 Corridor Reinforcement Project.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Council discussion?
I do. Yes, I have a question, actually, hopefully it can be answered. Quickly, the Bonneville Power Plant Towers, they're painted red. Where did the lady go? Wasn't she here?
She left.
She left.
Oh, they're painted red, with white stripes, and I was just wondering if the Tower Towers are gonna be painted as well through Waschuggah or Canvas? Has anyone happened to know the answer to that?
Yeah, I don't know. Typically, I think the ones that are crossing the river are in the location of the airports, that's where they start doing that.
Yeah, Councilman Shoemaker may know better than I, but my understanding is that anything over, I think it's 100 feet above the existing ground, has to be marked for aviation. That includes flashing red lights above a certain, and, but also includes red, or international orange, and white, and also that the lines have to have those big orange balls on them so that you can see them.
Dave?
And, and the regulations that govern this are Federal Aviation Administration, FAA regulations, and because this is an urban area, a populated area, they're not supposed to be below 1,000 feet in most cases, and in unusual circumstances, not below 500 feet, and the towers are gonna be, I think, 150 feet tall, so we probably won't have to have them painted that garish, red and white, and have the orange balls on them here. The reason that they, they have them on the river is that that's a corridor for all kinds of helicopter and other types of traffic that would be endangered by them. I don't think planes are allowed to fly over populated areas at altitudes that would pose a problem for those particular towers. That's my understanding also. Subject to being overruled by the FAA.
We could certainly, I'm sure Mitch can make the inquiry of Liz and find out if, if.
Thank you. It wouldn't affect my vote this evening, but it is a question that I had, and I'm sorry, I thought the representative was still here.
She really was.
She was. I saw her when I came in.
Other council discussion questions? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to Agenda Bill 4412, a resolution on contracts and agreements, approval thresholds, and procurement policies. Mrs. Forsberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. As we discussed last week in work session, in the past, all city contracts and agreements have been required to go through council prior to adoption, or approval for formal approval, and for administrative efficiencies, and just to streamline some of those processes, we're recommending the attached approval authorization levels to authorize the mayor to sign without coming through the formal council. All expenditures would still go through the normal AP process, and be approved by the full council as normal. That wouldn't change at all. And the resolution also directs me to put together policies and procedures, administrative policies and procedures to ensure the city is in compliance with all the purchasing, state laws, municipal code, and any applicable resolution requirements. So the recommended action tonight is to read the resolution by title only, and pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the resolution by title only.
Hearing no objections, order.
A resolution establishing thresholds for the delegation of contracting an agreement authority to the mayor or designate, and directing the finance director to establish and administer the necessary policies and procedures for contracting agreements and purchasing to ensure compliance with state law, municipal code, and any applicable resolutions.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second. I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to Agenda Bill 4512, a repeal of Waschuggah Municipal Code 3.74 Purchase Procedures. Jennifer?
Okay, along with the resolution that you just approved, we're recommending that we repeal this section of the code, as it's not, not complete and not applicable, and the procedures that I'm going to establish will take care of those requirements. So the recommended action is to read the ordinance by title only, pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the ordinance by title only.
Hearing no objections, order.
An ordinance repealing Waschuggah Municipal Code 3.74 Purchase Procedures.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
My second.
I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Any council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And that brings us back to the second opportunity for any comments from any member of the public. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to make a couple of comments.
May we have your address?
Name an address.
I'm John Wagner. I'm Larry's brother. I'm 36710, Southeast 20th Street, Waschuggah. I guess my comments about the meeting we had, the special meeting, on Thursday was, it was pretty impressive to see that many institutions, nonprofits, however you want to frame it, organizations in our community dedicated and spending so much time and effort doing things on behalf of this community. You'd have to look at that and think, wow, we're really lucky to live in such a really good place. I've lived here all my life, well, actually, I graduated from Canvas, but, you know what I mean, I've lived around here all my life, and I truly believe it is a fabulous place. But I noticed, too, that I mentioned earlier, a while back, that one of the pork commissioners went to an economic development meeting, and there were 30,000 communities competing to get people to move here and live here, and as you know, the city of Waschuggah contributes $50,000 a year, as does Canvas, $100,000 from the port for the Canvas-Waschuggah Economic Development Association. So there's a concerted effort to attract businesses. We're spending a lot of effort on the Steigerwald Commerce Center to make it available for people to come, and more recently, as you know, the mayor has taken, taken initiative to get a little more interest in our community, and I see in the paper that this may go as nationally as far as the CBS News evening, or morning TV stations, so what a great thing to have us showcased nationally on Waschuggah. You know, come to Waschuggah, move your business, come and live here. All those are wonderful things. But when we get to the notice that came out, and it was mentioned earlier, the word "faith-based", I know it was faith-based and nonprofits, and I'm a member of nonprofit myself, but the word "faith-based," to me, you know, how it's the perception. These are altruistic organizations, you've heard, of course, a variety of them, I know some of you are members of those, that really do good things for the community, and do good things for some of the less advantized people in our community, and what a better thing can an organization do? But also, if you look at national politics, the word "faith-based" also conjures up some very controversial issues, like abortion, and birth control, women's rights, and gay rights, and discrimination, and immigration, and things that polarize people, and things that divide people, and some states that have taken kind of, I guess, initiatives on those divisive, hot-button issues, I think it kind of reflects poorly on those states, and if you were a business, or a family wanting to move, I think that's a consideration. And I think those are debated at nauseam on the national stage. Here, what I've been observing is we do things like water rates and sewer rates, and sidewalks on Addy Street, and getting people across 32nd Street, the railroad tracks, and we take care of parks and recreation, and we do really good things as a city council, and, and you manage the budget. You know, all those numbers are pretty small to look at, but as I understand, they're, you're doing a very good job, and we have members of the city council that watch that money and, and challenge things. And all the time I've been coming here, I have yet to see the mayor stumped on an issue, no matter what it is. He's got expertise. The staff here is way, great expertise on those issues. So my view is, I'm not likely to change anybody's mind, but my view is, we spend a lot of money and a lot of effort to attract people to our community, and I think it would be better if we let the hot-button issues stay on the national level, and faith-based, the Constitution, I keep a copy handy, because I look at it every once in a while, the very first amendment of the Constitution, and the very first words in the First Amendment, it's kind of like some things they sort of forgot, so they came back and they added a few amendments. The first few were called the Bill of Rights. The very first words in the First Amendment is, "Congress shall pass no law regarding the establishment of a religion, and Congress will do nothing to prevent free," I just looked at it and I can't remember, "but the free exercise thereof." I'm sure you've all read it at one time or another. And to me, that's great, and I think that the faith-based, the churches could have a coordinated effort, and I think one of them could be the coordinating point, and if people come to this city with problems, they could be directed to that. But when we get the faith-based and churches integrated with the city's business, to me, I think that the separation of church and place, church and state, is there for a reason. I think the reason we don't have prayer in schools is because there's 1,500, at least, different faiths being exercised and worshiped in this country right now, and some of them are diametrically opposed to each other. And if your child went to public school, and I've had children in public school, you probably wouldn't want them to come home and say, "Dad, today we praise to Allah," and you might be Christian, or vice versa, or Hindu, or Buddhist, or you, you name it. There's a lot of them. I think that's why we do that, and I think that should carry over to government. Usually governments that get into theocracy aren't so good as far as the freedoms that we get to enjoy here in this country, and to me, that should be guarded very carefully. So in the future, I think, from my own personal view, is it's best that these organizations do the wonderful things that they do, and to coordinate together is a fabulous thing, and to do great things for the community is a wonderful thing, but not integrate it with the government. And Thursday night, I kind of view, you know, we're having a special meeting, to call a special meeting, and the next thing you know, we were almost gonna have an invocation in here, and if somebody was here from a different faith, they might take offense to that, because, you know, we represent what, 15,000 citizens here in the city, and I'm sure we have people from a lot of different views. So I think it was a great meeting to hear all those wonderful things, but I'm a proponent of the separation, and I personally think it's best that the city council sticks to the business that I've been able to observe, and to do it in public so we can watch. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other members of the public that wish to address council? Okay, moving to mayor's report, I, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Dunn for a moment in regards to National Public Works Week. Good evening, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor Gard, members of the council, members of the public. I don't have it up on my screen yet, so, okay, here we go. Having some technical difficulties. There are some slides in the Dropbox, and they'll provide a little bit more information, but we're just gonna really briefly go through this. Like, like the mayor mentioned, it is National Public Works Week, that's May 21st through May 25th. Sorry about that. Should be working now. I apologize for the technical difficulties here. Still not working. Well, in any case, yeah, the presentation doesn't seem to be working. It was working before we came in tonight, so I apologize for that, but we're just gonna go through this briefly. So Public Works is all around us. I mean, you know, you, when you drive to the store, when you turn on your water, when you flush the toilet, you know, when you go to the market, if you coach your child's baseball team, floods during rains, you know, Public Works is all around us. You know, when new business moves to town, you know, we have You know, when new business moves to town, you know, we have to serve that business so that we can provide them enough water to do business and to provide jobs and treat their waste streams. So Public Works handles a lot of different areas. And we handle cemetery issues as well. So we have a cemetery in town. If you look at your street signs at night, you can see that reflective stop sign at night. That's Public Works. You know, we check those signs if you want to go to the park and have a picnic. And then also, special events. So these are just some of the things that Public Works does. And we do it all year round. We have 150 miles, 155 miles of roadway in small Washougal, so there's quite a bit of area to cover. And we maintain equipment, all the equipment that we use to maintain those roadways. We clean and inspect approximately 1,471 stormwater catch basins and over 1,500 street signs. Staff also maintains 92 acres of park land and trails. And we maintain public buildings. We maintain and operate 12 acres of cemetery, as I mentioned before. So we are spread out there in the city, and we do a good job with limited staffing. So the water, the wastewater department produces over 537 million gallons of water and treats over 420 million gallons of wastewater each year. The department was able to reuse nearly 12 million gallons of treated wastewater. And so that's the water that goes through the treatment process, and then we use that for irrigation or for other things. We fill up some of our equipment and use that for hydroexcavation or when we need to clean catch basins. So that's a very good use of that wastewater. And lastly, Water and Wastewater Division's completed over 8,500 water quality tests. And we monitor 1,175 water system black backflow devices, excuse me. So there's quite a bit of work involved with the utilities as well. So these are, the next item I'd like to just talk about briefly is all the capital projects that we have in our city. And we are the stewards of our citizens' money. So when we have these multimillion-dollar capital facility plans and these capital projects, you know, we do our best to make sure that we get the best bang for our buck and we hire the right people that'll give us, that'll keep these facilities in service for the long term. So, and this is just a list of all those capital facilities and things that we're planning to do in the near future. Now, there it is again. Isn't that nice? So with that, I'd like to just, actually, there's one last slide. This is what Public Works is all about. These are the things that we do. You know, Public Works makes it convenient and comfortable and keeps the city safe so that business and citizens can go about their business and get things accomplished. And lastly, I just want to open it up for questions, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. And I really apologize for the technical difficulty that we had here tonight. Seems like we have some of the iPads and the laptop and everything didn't marry tonight, so I apologize for that. But does anybody have any questions about Public Works or what we do?
Counsel? I have one question for you, Jim.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not sure if it's between yourself or another department, but on the maintenance of buildings?
Yes.
Is there any way by next Monday we can make this system actually function the way it's always supposed to system, or work?
We will attempt to do so. Yes, sir.
Awesome. Thank you to you and all of your crews and staff for everything you do. You are correct. You guys are out there everywhere. It doesn't matter what's happening. You guys are part of all of the system, even when it comes to other departments and maintaining their equipment as well. So thank you for everything that you're out there doing.
If I could, I had the opportunity to sit on Public Works Committee for a couple of years, and so I get to see the Public Works operation up close. When you start comparing numbers from Washougal to other cities, it is stunning how lean our Public Works Department is, how much good we get out of so few people. It is amazing, continually amazing to me, having been in a number of different businesses, the quality and the dedication of the people in the Public Works Department. And that's not to say that that's not true of all the other departments as well. I believe it is. But I've just had a chance to be closer to them, and I really take my hat off to them. Thank them for me.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions, comments from council? Okay, I have no other items for you this evening. Councilmember comments? Joyce?
Well, I'd like to say that the Camus-Washougal Rotary received the WASA, which is the Washington Association of School Administrators Community Leadership Award for the Columbia River Region for their Young Women in Action Program at Hathaway School. We were there Thursday morning, and it was just quite, it was a very good feeling to have been part of that program. And as we continue that in Washougal, I think it will be important.
Congratulations. Paul?
Yeah, I have something. I'd just like to answer, excuse me, Mr. Wagner's questions, hopefully in the statement that I typed up surrounding this meeting on the 17th. Basically, I want to ask the council if we can have an open and honest discussion, basically, surrounding what went wrong and what went right regarding the meeting last Thursday. There's been a lot said on the blogs. There was an email sent out to two council members making a lot of accusations. And I'd just like to kind of go through a timeline and make some statements because I feel unfairly attacked and I'd really like to address that. First of all, I want to state that even though I did not plan or organize this event, I supported it and I thought it was a fantastic idea. I have and always will welcome any and all opportunities to hear from our citizens and partner with them, whether they're residents, business owners, church leaders, or nonprofit leaders. Here's some facts for you, Mr. Wagner. One week before the press release went out, I was assured by Councilman Russell that city staff was being contacted to get it set up and that the meeting was being noticed properly and that all nonprofits and faith-based organizations were being included. At the council meeting the following Monday, I assumed that it wasn't being announced formally because the semantics of the special meeting were still occurring within City Hall, and it would be improper to announce the meeting to the public until there was indeed going to be a meeting. I did not find out that the city's first notification was the press release dated May 9th until after the fact. I would have preferred that they be notified sooner. I did not know that there were potential legality OPMA questions surrounding the meeting until Mayor Gard started posting accusations on the Camus-Washougal Post Record public online blog. I was extremely concerned and researched state laws regarding special meetings to double-check these accusations, and I could not find any potential violations, other than making sure that we physically post the notice of the special meeting and include it on our website. I met with the city administrator to triple-check the accusations that Mayor Gard continued to make online. I was assured that the meeting was legal, that there may not be any additional fees from our city attorney, as he is on retainer, and the research done on the legalities was not overly extensive and probably needed to be done anyway due to the fact that both he and our city clerk have no experience planning a special meeting. The staff made sure that notifications were in place and followed up and received confirmation per state law from at least four council members to call the meeting. There were no violations. Bottom line is that the meeting was most definitely legal. The council chambers were packed with people, so folks must have been notified, and it was very positive and productive. However, for the mayor to go on the public blogs and make accusations as to the legality of the meeting before all the legal opinions were in, potentially opening up the city for liability, was not good. The mayor also told council members Freeman and Plinsky that council member Russell and I had taken them down a path that they did not fully understand, that they were hung out to dry, and that they were used. And he called it despicable. I've already spoken to both my colleagues, and they did not believe that was the case at all. I resent the comments. They are completely untrue. They are personal attacks against Councilmember Russell and myself, and in my opinion, a violation of our city code and ethics policy for elected officials. That's it.
David?
Yeah, sure. Change the subject if I may? Although I think that some of the objections that have been raised against that meeting are a tempest in a teapot. But I'll leave that to wiser heads than mine. I'm just not understanding all the objections to it. The Public Safety Committee met today, and I'm fortunate enough to chair that committee. It's an honor to work with our staff. We agreed on a mission statement today, and as soon as I get that coordinated with everybody and make sure I got it right and understood it right, I'll get it out to everybody. The commission, the Public Safety Committee is following the RFA, the Regional Fire Authority process, and will be feeding that back into the council. That's one way the council will get information on that. There are others. The administration will be telling people about that also. Mr. Mayor, I'll try not to step on any toes in that regard.
Not to worry.
One police blotter note of interest. We actually had someone that rear-ended one of our officers on patrol. I've always heard about things like that. I've always regarded it humorously. Fortunately, nobody was hurt. But if you're going to pick somebody to rear-end, you really ought to pick somebody besides a police officer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, David. Other counsel?
Do you have anything?
John?
We had our regional fire authority meeting last week. It was on Tuesday?
Thursday?
Thursday. Okay, sorry. Everywhere.
Tuesday. It was Tuesday.
Yeah, I thought it was Tuesday, yeah. A regional fire authority meeting on Tuesday. It was good. It was, some things that came out of that were looking to answer the question whether or not we should form a regional fire authority, hopefully by December 31st. That's the hope. And we also were able to designate certain committees. We did not vote on who, what council member was going to work with what committee, and we didn't elect a chairman because we wanted to have the full council present. There were two members that were missing. And it was just, it was really good. I thought it was very productive. I think if we were able to put our heads to it, I think that we're going to be able to meet that timeline. I think we'll be able to make a wise decision and bring forward to the people a plan, a direction with the assistance of both city staffs. So I'm very excited about that. I will, I want to address Mr. Wagner's comments. And I'd like to first say it was a special meeting. It was very special. And I appreciate the mayor and the staff, everyone who took part in putting that together, the other council members who came and attended. I've heard nothing but good comments all throughout the weekend from people who were there and were very excited about the possibilities that exist with what happened that night. The mayor and the council. We have two governing bodies in the city, the executive branch and the legislative branch.
You have three.
Well, judicial as well. But those that are within City Hall, we also do quasi-judicial items, but not too often. But the executive branch and legislative branch, under state law, a special meeting can be called by either body, both for emergency and non-emergency purposes. The notice has to be given at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting. This meeting, the notice that went out to our circulation, which is designated by state law, went to the Columbia. It also went to the Post Record, a week and a half prior to the meeting. Not 24 hours, a week and a half. Why four council members? Well, according to state law, it only takes four council members to conduct and to hold this special meeting. It's not a mandatory meeting, unlike our business meetings that we have here, like we're conducting tonight. And I would hope in the future that the council would continue this practice. We need to fine-tune it. We need to make sure that it's something that, you know, when we do it, we're doing it for different ways and different things to be able to bring new information, new ideas to the forefront. Touch on a couple other points. Faith-based initiatives are something that is done both on the federal, the state, and the local level across this country. This is not something new that we're creating or we're inventing. Relationships between governments and nonprofit or faith-based organizations exist everywhere. And as far as what we do here, like if we are having a faith-based meeting and there's fear that somehow it's going to keep businesses from locating here, I guess it really depends on what type of business you're wanting to bring in. I don't know. I would like to think that the businesses that do come here, come here because they see the value of the people and the work that can be done here and the employment opportunities for our people and for the good business environment that goes on here. So, you know, again, I think it really depends on what businesses you're wanting to bring here. We're not looking to integrate churches into the City Hall. We're looking to partner with churches, partner with nonprofit organizations. That's a very key distinction. Also, when you spoke about the Constitution, you were correct. It said, "Congress shall not establish a religion." It's like, "Congress shall not establish a religion." We're not Congress. And we're not establishing a religion. The other thing is, you know, on the original policy or the original announcement that we sent out the press release, it did have an invocation, and that was my lack of study. I later found out that because we do not have an invocation in our city code, it could not be part of the formal agenda. It could, but we'd be risking some liability there. So that was removed when we sent out the second agenda. You know, as far as the four council members, like I said, it's a special meeting. There were four of us that were interested. The process did take some time to be able to get a press release reviewed by the four council members, to get their approval, and then when it was done, it went out. There was no violation of OPMA. We were within our bounds and our rights as a legislative body to conduct and to hold a special meeting. Are there things that we can do to improve that process? I hope so, and I hope we will, so that we can make it a smoother transition if the council does want to proceed on future special meetings on a whole host of different issues, much like a, like I think I said before, like a town hall meeting or some kind of, you know, other event on another different topic. Hopefully, the Hopefully, the council will decide they want to do maybe another follow-up to the meeting we had Thursday night. So anyway, I just, you know, I hope that answered the questions that were asked, I tried to write them down as quickly as I could. So that is all I had. Again, thank you to everyone who participated, it was great to have everyone there, it was very successful, and it was due to all of us, thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Other council, Connie Jo?
The date eludes me, it wasn't, was it Monday night? We had the discussion at council where you brought forward questions, it must have been, because it would have been the Monday night before our special meeting. I spoke briefly to some questions that were proposed that night, not opposed, presented that night. The interesting thing to me is that it was a group of faith-based individuals that came therefore, and they requested to have an audience with the city council. Now, the decision was made to do a special meeting in order to accomplish that, but it's interesting, as I've had this discussion with people around the community since this knee-jerk reaction was so negative, that we don't seem to have any objections when other organizations want to come and stand at the pulpit, or the pulpit. Why is that Freudian slip? No, that's not. What's that called? What do you call that? The microphone, anyways.
Freudian slip.
No, not a Freudian slip. Just interesting, though, that we're not worried when it's Rotary Club, or it's Seroptimus, or the library, but when we say faith-based, and the faith-based people want an opportunity, there was an extreme outcry. It's interesting to me, just an observation, that somehow faith is a threat, which it should never be, because as you witnessed, the individuals that asked for the special meeting are amazing people, and they represent a very large constituency of Washtugul. I know we had a few comments made that Monday night about excluding people, but we worked through that, because there was never, ever, from the very beginning, any exclusion of any group, faith-based or nonprofit, so just a reiteration of that. And that's all I have to say. It was an excellent meeting, and I'm so thankful that we did it. I think everybody that participated is thankful, and we're going to have great things come from it. Let's do more.
Dave?
Mr. Mayor, I've only been following city government here for about seven years, and I don't remember when the last special meeting was called prior to this one. Do you remember?
Yeah, I think it was November, October of 2009.
We had the special meeting for the radon, didn't we?
Yeah, we had that as well.
And then we had the special meeting for Stacy after her issues.
Okay, but I don't remember one that was called for community input. I think most of those were for community information, weren't they?
About city business.
I would emphasize what a couple of my colleagues have said tonight, and that is, the process could be improved, and it's a learning process, and we learned something this time. I don't think next time we try to call one of these, it'll be such a big problem, because we've got the process down now. We live and we learn, and it's not always easy.
I found that listening to all the different entities in our cities and what they bring to the city was impressive and informative, and I'm hoping that at some place there will be a directory of resources so that everybody has that available. I was particularly surprised at how much the schools do, I thought I was more aware of that, and I just didn't know how much childcare and the food programs that take place in our schools. It's my personal feeling that people in need are in need. They should have the information available to them to be able to find help, wherever that comes from in our community. The city does have definite services that they provide, and obviously the schools do. Those are both kind of governmental entities, and it has opened up into care. The city does not do, we do not have a recreation department, which I think is a lack, which is a, would be a function that would help our young people. But I felt that the meeting was productive, and take away the brouhaha of how it came about, the actual meeting, I think awakened many people into what is going on in our community and the needs in our community that need to be met. So that's what I took away from it.
Thank you, Joyce. Any other, Connie Jo?
Just one more quick observation, that when the citizens request a time to stand before us, there was a massive turnout. I love the numbers and the involvement and the enthusiasm, the creativity. When we sometimes have gone to the citizens and asked them to come to meetings, they don't turn out. They're busy, they're off doing things, but when they have a passion and they want to present to us, look what happened. It was quite a comparison, and that is no condemnation against anybody that might call a meeting to present to the citizens. I know it's tough to get them, to turn the TV off, or to, you know, cancel family meetings, or sports, and scouting, and all those things that interfere, but wow, it was great to see so many people turn out, because they were the ones that initiated it. Big difference. Thank you.
Paul?
First thing I want to say, since my Public Safety Committee and Regional Fire Authority Committee is here, is my great concern is that in the present political environment with the heroes of 911, it is a practical political impossibility to say no to a fire budget. If we have a regional fire authority, that budgetary authority ordinarily rests with the Fire Authority Commission. That wouldn't be a problem, but there is a Washington State statute that puts a cap, a limit, on the, what's called the mileage rate, the total dollars, per thousand dollars of assessed value that can be assessed. It includes essentially all taxing bodies. Several years ago, I don't know about this year, but the Fort Vancouver Regional Library passed a levy increase from 35 cents to 50 cents. Because of the cap, that took several tens of thousands of dollars out of the budget of Washtugul. Let me say that again. Because the library passed an increase in their levy, it took money out of our property tax revenue. If we have a regional fire authority, we have the same problem. We have the same expense, or we've lost control of the budget. There are ways around that, there are several fire authorities that have solved that problem statewide. I would just ask that we be very conscious of it, and that we do not paint ourselves into a corner where we have all of the expense and none of the control. In regard to the special meeting, I haven't read any of the blogs or any of that stuff. I admit I was a bit miffed, because it gave me such short notice on contacting other organizations. I think the concern about the phrase "faith-based" is that it tends to be exclusionary, not inclusionary. And for example, although Habitat, I walked out of here, and at 3:00 the next morning, it occurred to me, Habitat for Humanity, a faith-based organization, they weren't invited.
They were invited.
I personally invited Dawn Tarzian from the school district, Bridget from the Children's Home Society. I reached out to my one contact in the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and he did show up. It was just a happenstance that the woman from Affordable Community Environments was in to talk to David Scott, and he mentioned that the meeting was coming up, and I think that Dawn and the people from ACE and Children's Home Society made tremendous contributions to that meeting. I haven't figured out who else I left out, and all I would ask is that we not do this on short notice, that we give everyone a chance to think about what resources are out there that need to be included in the discussion. And just be aware that the phrase "faith-based" tends to be, in a lot of people's minds, thought of as exclusionary rather than inclusionary. Certainly, nonprofit or community organization is a much more general term and less loaded with political context. That said, I went to the Chamber of Commerce meeting Friday before our special meeting, and our two mayors, Scott Higgins and Sean Gard, did State of the City, and it was interesting. In fact, more than that, I was gripped by all of the things that they had to say. They were funny, and it was very informative. And the other thing that I think really stood out for all of the pranks around the diet is that there's great true affection for Sean and Scott, for each other and within that group. So that led me to go over to the Camus Workshop today and read the following statement. Our mayors are having great fun in their Biggest Loser contest. It all supports the goal of healthier communities. Despite their obvious affection for each other, they are competitive. But then again, I was never a panther, I was never a paper maker, I was never even a husky, cougar, duck, or beaver. So I choose to be more collaborative than competitive. The hardest thing about working out is showing up, and having a workout buddy helps. So as I looked at their council and assembled staff, I said, so if any of you are interested, I'd love to partner up for walks, hikes, golf, gym, diet, whatever. And so if you'd like to get on board with the Camus of Washtugul on a diet, you all know how to reach me. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. John?
Just a couple of points, Paul. If anyone else would have showed up last Thursday, we wouldn't have had room to get them in. So in a lot of ways, it was actually maybe a blessing that where we were at, where we were at with the people that were here. But the other thing is, I find it interesting that you equate religion with politics, that it's, you almost make them synonymous. And I just, I find that interesting. Anyway, I don't see the two as being one and the same. So, anyway.
Don?
I might as well weigh in on the special meeting issue. My concern was, the statute specifically allows for council members to call a special meeting, there's no doubt about that. So that's kind of a question, how do you do that without having a meeting? So my finding was, and confirmed with municipal research, that since it's specifically allowed, it can't be done. It doesn't mean you could go beyond that. So if in the future, if we're going to be doing special meetings called by council members, it should be, the conference should be specifically limited to a topic, a meeting, a time, the things that are in the statute. So it doesn't give license to go long beyond that and have a quote serial meeting type of thing. So that's my caution for future, future special meetings.
Thank you, Don. Connie Jo?
Could you email that statute so that we could have that for background education? Thank you.
It's RCW 4230.
I will email it to all council, except for Paul, who obviously hasn't been there.
Any other items from council? Okay, a couple of comments that I have on it. I certainly, I think it is correct, and a little bit of a, especially in one of the responses we got from municipal research, there's kind of an implied but not ability for council members to call that meeting, and it's one of those almost things where it's been put in the statutes, but nobody ever decided to describe how to do that, and I think that's where municipal research is now asking the Attorney General's Office for a written opinion, rather than just, we think they're okay, we shouldn't have put that in there without them having the ability to actually be able to call a meeting. So that's one of the things that certainly needs to be corrected at some point, and not just for ourselves, for everybody out there. I think it's also unfortunate, and one of the things that we get caught up in is, special meetings typically are called for emergency-type functions, not always, but in many cases they are. So we end up under that stigma of, if it's a special meeting, something must be wrong. In this case, there were a whole lot of things, obviously, that were right, so that, that's just one of those stigmas that we'll go with. Same thing with faith-based. I think it's also unfortunate in this country when you hear "faith-based," that all of a sudden you go towards the negative side of your brain, or a lot of people seem to do that. Whether that's national politics that have driven that that direction, don't know, don't care. Internally, I've asked our staff to start talking in terms of community-based, and to some degree, I have a problem doing that, because we're not going to have a holiday tree here, as long as I'm here, we're going to have a Christmas tree, we're going to have a menorah, we're going to have whatever it is that the community decides we're going to have, and we're going to call it what it is. So when I start getting to the point of calling meetings that include our faith-based community, and calling those community-based meetings, it rubs me a little bit wrong, but I guess if it, if it helps some folks within the community be a little bit easier on it, that type of thing, I'm okay with that, if it gets us to the same result when it's all said and done. As I said last Monday, and as I said in the blogs, as I said in emails, and as I said to the public wherever they've asked me, I had no problem with the premise of the meeting whatsoever, I think we had a great meeting. The problem was in the way that it was called for, and the things that we could have done that would have assisted the staff and ourselves in getting it put together properly. I don't believe our staff doesn't know how to call a special meeting. It's pretty well called out in state law, it's pretty well called out in our own policies, how we go about those things.
That was a quote.
There are certain things.
That was a quote from our city administrator.
And that's fine. Councilmember, I said, "I don't think." So it's not an accusation, it's an "I don't think." And I know you were at the meeting, the luncheon on Thursday, when I said, "I pretty much speak my mind, I'm a fairly blunt individual, I speak my mind the way it goes." There are many things we can do better. With advanced communication, with someone talking with staff, we can get those done. In the case of a special meeting, a notice isn't a press release, a notice is a legal document that needs to go to certain places. And in fact, the statute says it has to be filed by the clerk. There are certain things we have to follow, and that's all I'm asking in the process, is that we follow those, and we try and do things so that we do them once, we do them correctly the first time, and we make sure that we've got all those parts and pieces in there. I know from the conversations I was in, I would say that the special meeting took up an abnormal amount of last week's time or the week prior, just from the conversations I was in, and most of those were on the phone, I wasn't even in town. In regard to the newspapers, I'll look back through and see, and see if there are things that I've... In regard to the newspapers, I'll look back through and see, and see if there are things that I, I apologize if you felt that there were accusations in there. I think what I was making were corrections and trying to point out things that needed to be done properly. I'll make a correction tonight. And John, I know you've said that, you know, the notice was out there almost two weeks early. It was a week and a half early. The notice went out eight days before the meeting. To me, that's a week. It's a little bit more than a week, but it's not a week and a half. It's not almost two weeks. So again, my wish is to make sure that we are doing things correctly as they're called for. And the best way to do that, even in my own stuff throughout the day, is to ask Dave, ask Jennifer, ask those folks who have those resources to them on, "I think I know kind of sort of what we want to do or what I want to do. How do we do it?" And that's what we've got them there for. That's why they've got folks on the other end of telephones and emails and that type of thing to be able to go through and do it. In regards to the email that I sent to the two council members, Councilman McDaniel, absolutely, I feel like they got thrown under the bus. Connie Jo, last Monday, sat here and she was trying to do an admirable job of answering questions and things that had come up. But I think one of the comments, if I remember correctly, that she made was, "You know, I'm trying to go through all this. I'm not the person that called for the special meeting or sent the notice out. But here I am, one of the only ones who's here, taking the brunt of this." So yeah, I speak plainly. I think they kind of got hung out to dry. I understand that you were sick, and that happens. I understand John was out of town, that happens. But I think there was a sentiment, a lot, in these chambers that there were a couple of council members that by no, no anything of their own, kind of got the brunt of folks that were here on Monday that wanted to speak out. And I think other council members that were present would, would kind of feel that as well.
Karen?
So in my world, so did we do it correctly or did we not?
In the end, yes.
We did it correctly? Because I, I understand the uproar to some degree prior to the meeting. But I'm kind of with Joyce in the fact that I, my whole view on so many things in this city has changed since Thursday. I was blessed to be in that, in this room on Thursday. I was amazed by where we live. But I'm still a little confused as to, did we do it right or not? And is it just the fact that there wasn't the time beforehand that some people wanted?
I think time, time always helps. But even if it had just been the eight days, just to have things phrased correctly, I know we have a council member that didn't believe they were even supposed to be here on Thursday. I can show you communications from citizens that wanted to know if it was okay if they showed up on Thursday. It's just the way things are worded, the way things are put together and how it's presented out there. It's, and again, I think a lot of it comes back to that term "special meeting." All of a sudden, all the rules are off the, off the table and this is something different than we normally do. When in fact, what it was, was a council meeting on a night that we don't normally have council meetings on a single topic and was called for in a specific way. Other than that, everybody's invited. You're all expected to be here. All the attendance rules are already in place, or are still in place. And the public is certainly invited, no matter who they are, no matter where they live. So again, and I know our senior staff, even on a regular basis, even in some of the things that I look at doing, you know, they'll, they'll have other ways of being able to phrase things, other ways of, you know, "We need to think about this. We need to think about that." Great, perfect, and that's exactly what they're there for. Again, that's all I'm asking. That's all I asked last Monday was for us, for you as council, to also use them. Because that's what they're there for, is to keep us out of trouble and make sure that we do do things correctly.
John?
So if another special meeting is called, is the process in place to be able to handle it?
Your rules, your rules of procedure tell, say exactly what you need to do.
Okay. Right. And the other, the other question I have too is, let's say, four council members want to have a town hall meeting. Not necessarily here.
We need to, I think that's one of the other things that caught us last week. I mean, quite frankly, when I finally got to Dave and said, "What is this that we're having? What is this thing?" Because I talked about a special meeting, talked about a forum. Then we were talking about a town hall. Then we were going, and finally we said, "You know what? Let's go to the worst possible case. Don't take that one wrong. Let's call it a special meeting." Because at that point, we have to do a whole lot of things. Let's go ahead and do them and make sure that we cover ourselves.
But it doesn't allow for, the law doesn't allow for us to do other things outside of calling it a special meeting. Is that correct?
It does as long as there aren't more than four of you, or more than three of you.
No, I'm saying, as, as when the women got together for their meal, that was called as a special meeting. Was that correct?
No.
No, it was not.
It was not.
That wasn't the city business, so I don't think.
No. If it's a special meeting, you're all going to be here.
So what, how was that declared to the press?
That was a social event, and there's some exceptions in the OPMA.
Okay, so would a town hall meeting be considered a social event?
No. It would not.
It would not? Okay.
There's a, there's an entire section that defines.
Paul, Paul. John's got the floor.
Now, I understand about the entire section that defines, we even have stuff written in our code about how to conduct a meeting. But the, I guess the question is, I'm trying to get, I guess I'm trying to get to the point of, if there are four council members that want to do something together as a town hall meeting or what have you, what is the process for that? Like, I understand and I appreciate the other council members and the mayor being there Thursday night. That is not at all a question. But if the four members are wanting to do something in that effect, does it have to be then, the mayor has to show up and then conduct the town hall meeting? Or why can't the council members themselves conduct the town hall meeting apart from having a chair of the meeting per se? And I guess that's where I'm trying to get, you see what I'm saying? There's just a lot of curves in that.
Correct. It, I think, let me take it for a stab. It really comes down to whether you're conducting business on behalf of the city. And if you are, then at that point, it becomes a meeting.
That's a pretty broad definition, by the way.
Yeah. Even, even if the, the business in the meeting is just conversation any direction, that, that constitutes, I mean, we're talking about programs we have. We're talking about funding that we do for them. We're talking about different things in there. So at that point, it becomes a meeting. It needs to be noticed. Now, there are certainly other things, there are things that happen in our community, well, throughout in our community. There are things that may happen in Olympia where we go through and it's not something that you all normally see. Sometimes you do, sometimes you don't. Where we will put out a notice of, "There is a meeting coming up. There is a State of the County that's being held at the Washougal High School Auditorium. And there is a possibility that a majority of our council may attend. But there is no city business being conducted." So we've kind of done it two different ways. We've said, "We know that something may happen out there. It's not a city kind of thing, but we may have lots of people there." Chamber luncheon, same thing.
So if, in the future, and I, and maybe this would just be a better way to go about it, is that if we are going to have a town hall meeting, we do it in threes. That way, we're avoiding having to conduct a special meeting. You know, but the, the instance is that, you know, in this particular case, there were four of us that really wanted to do this. And, and we wanted to, to bring this forward. And if the mayor or the council, or us, the council wanted to join in, that's great. You're more than welcome to do that. But there were four of us that wanted to bring this forward. So, so I guess that's just what I'm trying to, I'm looking at long-term. How do we, how can we navigate this water so that there's not, you know, a, a perception that there's some devious scheming going on? That, you know, that we're just trying to do something actually beneficial for the community. And so.
Sometimes it can be difficult. I mean, even if three of you call it and a fourth one shows up and a fourth one actually speaks up and talks, now all of a sudden, we have a meeting. And now we didn't notice it and it...
That'd be a violation. Now, I think you're absolutely right. It's kind of a fine line.
Yeah.
If city business is going to be discussed and there's a quorum, it has to be, it's above a meeting session.
Although I think we would be just fine, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if somebody wanted to have a town hall meeting and there were, we wanted all the council members there, but, you know, maybe some of you are directing it. It's a town hall meeting, not a meeting. I think we can notice that, that direction as well and put some proper wording in it, that type of stuff, and make sure that all the things are done to where it doesn't matter who shows up. And, and it can be a different type of meeting. I mean, not even the formal way we did it on Thursday to where we're up here, they're down there, more town hall style. I think those can be done. It just takes, that's even, that gets back to that question that Dave and I even had last week when we, when we got the thing of, "What is this? How is it? Who is it?" Because we've got to make sure that we've actually got it legally called for from you all so that we can notice the call for the meeting and do all those other things out there. So I don't think we're locked into having necessarily a workshop or a, or a council meeting. I think we can, we should be able to have other types of meetings as long as we clearly declare what it is we're doing.
I think so. As long as it's done legally, called legally and a member of people. Or the mayor can call a meeting without his own permission. So as you said, John, there's two, two or three questions. It goes to the administration and the...
And I, and I am happy that you're going to get an opinion from the Attorney General because I think.
We're, we're not. Municipal research said that they, we're not the only ones that have ever asked that question.
And just off the cuff, another one they should really look at is the Civil Service Commission. Why do they make them declare political parties to be on the Civil Service Commission when we don't have party declaration?
I think that goes back to patronage. That goes back to the, probably the tens and the twenties.
But again, areas of the law that aren't well-defined and are really kind of antiquated, so.
Agreed.
Paul?
I have some concerns with, with the idea of town halls. Not the least of which is, I really would recommend a very careful reading of the Open Public Meetings Act. For, just for example, basically what it says is that you can't conduct city business even in less than a majority if it's making decisions. And it also defines business as a whole bunch of things. But one of them, it defines it as, as deliberations. Pretty broad term. And another one that it defines business as is taking testimony. And so I think you're probably on pretty square me ground there.
I disagree real quick. I disagree on the, the less than four members.
Can I finish, please? I'll let you finish.
Less than four members. Because we have committees. And committees, we, I mean, we chose to go to a workshop format, but a committee in other cities actually take votes and bring things to the council. So I'm not really sure that the OPMA would apply there.
I'm also concerned that by doing that, you're excluding the rest of council from what is basically city business. The, I mean, I know when I was new on the council, you brought me up short one time for referring to, "Council wants this." And that it's a matter of law that you can't do that unless there's a council resolution to that effect. And so I'm, you know, what I'm concerned about here is exclusion. I think we need to have the entire council included. And it is admittedly a very odd and strange part of the Open Public Meetings Act. But I can talk about pretty much anything and say what my heartfelt beliefs are to anyone in this room except for seven people. In fact, anyone in the state of Washington or in the United States, except for these seven people, including myself.
Outside of an open meeting.
Outside of an open meeting. So that's one of the odd, if you will, side effects of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Joyce?
Dawn, can, I know a legislator or a congressperson or a senator can call a town meeting as an individual. Can we as individuals call a town hall meeting?
I think as an individual, if it wasn't involving city resources, you could absolutely tell people to come down to the pizza parlor and talk about whatever you want to talk about. I don't think there's any law that would agree with that.
And I'd take it one further and say, "If you needed city resources, just let us know and we'll probably try and make those available to you." I think, you know, CAMUS is a good point. They do their award meetings. And they used to do them individually, then they went to twos, then they went to threes, just to try and save on staff time and their own time and scheduling and everything else. But it's the same type of, it's a little bit, well, yeah, it's somewhat town hall meetings.
So three of us could go together and have a town hall meeting?
You know, I, I believe that to be correct. As long as there's not a quorum.
As long as the fourth person doesn't show up.
Right. And I guess the concern is, is then, you know, to get clicks where you're talking about the things that interest you and then another click starts talking about things that are interesting to them. And, you know, the other members of council excluded from participating. Is that, is that a good policy?
And I would just, just add a caution. And I think we need to get some clarification from, on that particular point. Because there is a, there is advice out there from MRSC about committees. And when you have a committee that's less than a quorum of the governing body, are the committee meeting subject to the OPMA? And being subject to the OPMA doesn't mean you can't do it. It just means that you have to tell people about it. It, it's really about notice. It's really all it's about. And there's a definition, we call it "city business." That's become a surrogate for the statutory term, which is "action." It's actually the word that's in the statute. And so whether it's an informal committee, three who have a common interest on a particular topic or want to just do a town hall, or whether it's a formal committee that you have, the statute talks about the fact that you're subject to the OPMA if, and it lists all these different reasons why. And I think we could kind of call it whatever we want, kind of do whatever we want and potentially not have it be a council meeting. That's the distinction that I think the council is looking for. It would not be a council meeting, but it would be something that would be subject to the OPMA. Once it crosses the line and becomes a council meeting, then the statute's very clear on who presides and your rules kick in and we have to follow all of those things. I think what might be helpful is hearing the commentary tonight on what, what some of the ideas are for engaging our constituents. There's a couple of different types of flavors of what that meeting might look like and how do we do that? And understanding it's all in good faith to do it the right way. That we'll package something up for a workshop if that's your pleasure. Kind of think about all these different ways that you might engage the community and talk about how it can be done appropriately and, and give you what all of your options would be. And then, you know, at your pleasure, you can, you know, choose to leverage any of those different types of opportunities. And we'll get all the OPMA stuff fleshed out and, and special meeting stuff fleshed out as best we can. You know, try to do that relatively soon.
Thank you.
By the time it's all done, you may be helping your, your counterparts in the rest of the state as well. So I'm sure we're not the only, the only community that deals with that. John, I love your ideas of town halls. I think they're one of the greatest tools that we've got because we truly get people together and we discuss things.
You're right, Mr. Mayor. And, and that's been one thing I've seen being on the council for the last six years that we just haven't really done as a council. Now, the mayor has done them in the past. And, and the mayor has invited the staff and the council to attend. But I haven't seen the council in the past really take the initiative to get out there into the community and to, and to hold these kind of forums and these different things. And, and it's really, you know, my heart for this council is to see us move in that area and be more aggressive, if you will, in reaching out to our constituents on issues that just really are of different flavor. I mean, Thursday was to faith-based, but, you know, maybe next, maybe next meeting is calling all entrepreneurs. I mean, you know, I don't know. You know, so it's those kind of things where I just really want, you know, my desire is to see the council really step up and to, and to, and to move forward. And, and I hope that we'll be able to iron these things out. I appreciate, David, that your willingness to help us get a nice pathway to be able to make those kind of things happen. And, you know, just as when the mayor puts on, you know, strategic planning and some of the, the other things that you've been doing, you know, that, you know, that, that also benefits the city as well. And, and so I just would like to see our council to be... And, and so I just would like to see our council to become more intentional in outreach.
Final comment, if I may. One of the things that's come out of this discussion tonight for me is that, before we take pen in hand with an angry mind, it probably would pay us to pick up Mr. Alexander Graham Bell's invention and talk with each other first. I don't mind my colleagues calling me and being irritated with me. I'll probably be irritated right back with them. But at least we'll have a chance to resolve this before it hits the newspapers. And I think that's probably a good idea.
Just don't worry, do it.
No party lines, right?
Other items from council? I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
I've got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Did you see I beat you to the fence this morning?
What?
Did you see I beat you to the fence this morning?
Yeah, you did.